To the regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council, it's Monday, March 4th, 2013. We start with a public hearing. Public hearing is on the ordinance amending voting districts. A public hearing has been scheduled to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 30, Elections, Section 30-2, Voting Districts of the Town, of the Enfield Town Code. May we have roll call, please?
Councilman Arnoni.
Here.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Crowley. Councilman Edgar.
He's out ill.
Councilman Hall.
Here.
Mayor Copan.
Here.
Councilman Kinsler.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
There's nine members present and two are absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Tuesday, February 26, 2013, Town of Enfield Legal Notice Public Hearing. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chamber, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, March 4th, 2013, at 6:50 p.m. to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 30, Elections, Section 30-2, Voting Districts of the Enfield Town Code. Ground rules for the public hearing are as follows. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera, time. And we ask that you please refrain from the use of personalities. Is there any general information before we open the public hearing? Matt?
Just briefly, in November, the voters of Enfield approve the council districts, the new council districts based upon the 2010 census. And we are now following up with some of the paperwork that needs to go along with that. 30-2 sets out where the voting districts are for the people to vote within the town. So this brings it in line with the new council districts.
Thank you, Matt. And we will now open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding this public hearing? For the first time, anyone? For the second? And third time, sensing none, I will close this public hearing. It is 7 o'clock, so we can move to our regular agenda. And I would ask Councilman Mangini.
Yes.
To please lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask everyone to please rise.
The Americans Creed. I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the governed, a democracy and a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity for which American patriots sacrifice their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country, to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and to defend it against all enemies. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may we have roll call, please?
Councilman Edgar. Councilman Hall.
Here.
Mayor Copan.
Here.
Councilman Kinsler.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
Councilman Arnoni.
Here.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Crowley. There's nine members present, two are absent.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the fire evacuation announcement. I remind our audience, in the event of a fire alarm sounding here at Town Hall, I remind you all that we must evacuate the building. The closest exit would be to the rear of council chambers and out to the front of Town Hall. But if you choose to take the side door to your right or left, we ask that you take the back set of stairs to the backside of Town Hall and out to the parking lot. Minutes of the preceding meetings, first would be the special meeting of February 19th, 2013.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Any discussion? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention? And we have the regular meeting of February 19th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. Our next item is our special guest section, and we have two very special guests with us this evening representing the Connecticut Trees of Honor Memorial. And I'd like to call forward Diane and Sue. Right here to the center table. The microphone is already set. Should be on.
Is there a place we could display this one?
Perfect.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having us. I believe there is a slide that you're going to see as well that represents our dream for the park. But let me just give you just a little bit of introduction first. My name is Diane DeLucio. I am a Gold Star and Blue Star mother. If you're not familiar with those terms, a Blue Star mother means you have someone in service in the military, and a Gold Star mother means you lost someone in service. I lost my son Stephen in 2010 while he was serving in Afghanistan. Shortly after Stephen was killed, I was contacted by Sue Martucci, who was chairing this committee, Connecticut Trees of Honor Memorial. And it was Sue's dream to have a statewide memorial to all the fallen from the Iraq and Afghanistan wars. And at that time, in 2010, the committee was searching for towns to host this memorial. And fast forward to 2013, we have a site in Veterans Memorial Park in Middletown where this memorial will be built. We will start with Phase 1 this year, and Phase 1 is the trees and the individual plaque for each of the fallen soldiers. I have a sample. I don't have a tree, but I have a sample of the plaque, and I'm not sure if you'll all be able to see this. But this, in your packet that you have, there's a, this will be, this is a granite etching, laser etching.
Right there.
Zoom in right now.
Okay. This happens to be of my son Stephen, but each of the 63 fallen will have a similar plaque with their pictures and their information on it. What we are asking of the Town of Enfield is to sponsor the trees for the two fallen heroes from Enfield, Philip Jordan and Philip Johnson. And I'm sure you are more familiar with them. I have just recently met the families, and I'm sure you're more familiar with those brave soldiers than we are. But our goal is to not only honor the 63 fallen from Connecticut, but to also have special places for all veterans that served in any war. And many of those came home safely, but we want to honor all veterans in this park. The key will be the trees for the 63 fallen, but there will be room to celebrate and to honor all veterans at that park. Did I miss anything, Sue? I think you did a good job. I don't know if we entertain questions from any of you.
Yes. Yes, if you're done with your comments, we'll open it up for questions and comments from the council. Councilman Stokes?
I just want to say thank you for being here, and obviously for you for the sacrifice that you have made with your son. And just, we appreciate you being here, but thank you for that sacrifice. And I like the idea, so I don't have too much comments past that. But I thank you for recognizing the two that have fallen from our community, too. We think that's great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Councilman Kinsler.
Ditto. Thank you very much for coming. If you haven't figured it out yet, Enfield is a very veteran memorialized friendly town, and we take a lot of pride in the sacrifices that they've made. My one question I had was, how big, and forgive my failing eyes, how big is the park?
Well, the park is very big.
I mean, inside the trees.
The memorial section of the park, I don't, I'm not sure how much acreage it takes up. I want to say it's between three and five acres.
So it's very large, okay. Cool. Thank you. I love it.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Tom. I got Councilman Arnoni.
Yes, thank you for being here tonight. I think this is a wonderful idea. God bless your son, and I'm sure for the ultimate sacrifice he made for us. And the date it opens, what do you expect?
Well, we had hoped for spring of 2013. Because you're planting trees, you've got to be conscious of that. So it looks like there's going to be some road repairs that we won't be able to get in in spring, but it looks like it'll be fall of 2013 we'll be planting the trees.
And the trees and the plaque, the price per plaque that we're looking to acquire?
Yeah, 1,500 per.
Right. If it was up to me today, I would have the town cut a check on this right away. I really think that our soldiers should be recognized in this park. There's no doubt about it. And I'll do everything I can, even with my own wallet, to make this happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Hall?
I, too, would support us supporting the trees for our two fallen soldiers from Enfield. They made the ultimate sacrifice, and I know everybody up here truly appreciates everything that they've given for this country. So I think that's the very least we could do as a community. So I'll support this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
I just have to say, you're a stronger person than I am. I support it 100 percent. And to see a mom sit here, just, you got my support.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Diane, first of all, thank you so much for contacting us and to receive the email. And you know, because Diane actually serves on the Glastonbury Town Council, found that out this evening. So thank you for your service as well. But to receive your email and to read about the project, and that's why we brought it forth to the council and wanted the two of you to come here this evening to tell us about it, but also to start the public awareness campaign, because there's, the town or businesses and individuals can also get involved in the information packet that Diane and Sue passed out this evening. You'll see that there's an Adopt a Brick campaign for the park as well. I would love the town, as our way to say thank you to Philip Jordan and Philip Johnson, is to have the council be the ones donating the trees, the funds for the trees and the memorial. But hopefully, the town, too, can get behind the Adopt a Brick, because I'm sure there's a lot of folks that would like to support the wider efforts for this park. So we've got the information. We'll see what we can do, public relations-wise, to help promote the wider project and try to get some folks from Enfield contributing, becoming sponsors of the park itself, and people donating money for bricks to honor folks that may have served, that they want to honor as well. And we'll just have to formalize what we need to do for you at our next council meeting. But I'm pretty sure you've got unanimous support up here in that the Town of Enfield will be participating, will be honoring Philip Jordan, Philip Johnson, and hopefully other areas as well that our community can get behind. You're showing me the card.
Yeah. You want me to tell the website?
Sure. Yeah. Microphone.
The website is, I have just put up on the screen here, is for anyone to go to, is cttrees, with a plural, ofhonor.com. And in there, if you could elaborate on what the public could do, that would be awesome.
Yes. Thank you so much. I didn't want to mention the website and just slipped my mind, but you're correct. If you visit the website, there's a tab there that says Ways You Can Help, and it's everything from sponsoring a brick, as was mentioned earlier. We're looking for monetary donations, host an event, pasta dinners, that kind of thing. We're looking for a variety of ways that the public can help. Nurseries, we're reaching out to them with individual tree donations or other landscaping that we'll have in there, the actual physical labor of planting some of the trees, volunteers, that kind of thing. So, anything else? Well, we recently, the last, actually, few weeks, became a nonprofit. We had applied over a year ago, and it took over a year to get our nonprofit status. So that will help us go a lot further, a lot faster now that we have that.
I can also tell you that having been to the Marine Corps Museum and found my father's brick, that you'll get a lot of support for the bricks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Stokes?
I just want to mention, too, in our town here, we have what's called the Enfield Fourth of July Town Celebration. And I think that over the weekend, we can have 60,000 people come through the green. And we have areas to where we have organizations that are able to set up and display different causes and stuff, part of our craft fair and stuff. So you might want to communicate to the mayor, or to me, or whatever, but to get you maybe a spot there. Because we have a lot of folks, a lot of communities that come through, that it'd be great to make them aware of this, so.
Thank you.
Great suggestion. Anyone else? Well, thank you so much. Any wrap-up comments that you may have?
I love Enfield. Well, we're overwhelmed by your support, because you're one of the first towns that responded to our letters. So we are very grateful, very appreciative. We have a very small group working on this memorial to get the whole thing done. And there's a lot of different ways, a lot of things we have to cover. So we really do need the financial support, but also just the moral support of the people behind us. And this memorial will be different than most memorials. They're all beautiful, they're all great in their own way. It's a place where the families, friends, and future generations can come and walk through. And it's a living memorial, so it will be very special. And we've also gotten, even from just two years ago mentioning this, to other Gold Star families, their support immediately for a memorial of this kind. So we thank you.
So up on, oh, they just took it down. I was going to say, can you put that back up? Up on the screen, which you can't see, but at home on the television, is the depiction of the park. If you'd like to give an explanation as to the design and...
Yeah, there will be, I'm assuming you can see two pink circles, one near the lower part and one sort of midway through the park? Do you see that, like?
We see the purple...
Yeah, it's the engineer's drawing, so it's not as clear as this poster here. And he can zoom in on...
So how about ETV? How about if you zoom into?
Do I have to zoom in here?
Yeah, you can come on up.
Yeah, sure.
This is sort of our entrance plaza. There's a...
Now, how about if, Diane, how about ETV? If you can put this photo, or this board on by your camera, zoom right in.
Come on this side here.
Come over here. And then you can see yourself on television. Can you zoom right into the board?
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
That's good.
Where they are showing right now here is the ceremonial plaza. We'll have the flags and throughout the year, different times of the year when we have our ceremonies, this will be the ceremonial plaza. This section of trees right here are the plum trees that you have. So they will always have this red, actually, they're called thundercloud plum. So these will flower during a certain part of the year, but most of the time, these will be purple. And so that'll be, we feel that's a nice backdrop. And then the others are a variety of trees throughout. Here, down here is our entrance plaza, where we will have the sign and we'll have our dedication, most likely in this area, for all veterans. Each of the trees along the path will be surrounded on both sides of the path with different kinds of trees. And next to each of the trees, it's hard to see on this picture, but there is actually the name for each, and we already know where each of them will be. Unfortunately, I don't have, I'm not spotting the two Phillips right quickly, but I do know my son will be over here, Stephen. So there will be a water feature in this part, most likely a little fountain. There's a lower area, and that's something that Middletown is doing. They want to put in a little water feature to just, I guess, for the serenity of the whole feel of the place. This is, in the back here, is, you know, big mature trees are already there. So it's a wooded area, but this center part is currently cleared, so we'll be filling it with some nice trees, the lights, and, as I said, for ceremonies, so we'll be able to host some... And benches. Yeah, there'll be benches along the pathway that you see here as well.
Very nice. Wonderful. Any other comments? Ken?
Will there be some sort of a ceremony when the park's opened?
Absolutely.
That we can be invited to?
Definitely. Definitely. We're going to have, you know, a groundbreaking and our initial, when we first plant the trees in the fall, but once, we plan to have in the ceremonial area, we will have monuments and granite statues and that kind of stuff. That's part of our Phase 2. So we'll probably have a couple of those ribbon-cutting ceremonies.
Beautiful.
We will definitely include all of our supporters.
Thanks very much.
I'd like to also mention that right now, we have a national competition going for artists to submit their designs for different elements to add to the memorial, which could be sculptures, different kinds of plaques. And Diane is heading that piece up, so she can elaborate a little more on that, but it is a national competition. We currently have a registration of 25 artists throughout the country who have registered for the competition in April 1st. Should I go back? April 1st is the deadline to submit your designs for our Phase 2, which will be, again, the statues and the granite monument area.
Wonderful. Any other comments?
Just one.
Go ahead.
You just sold a brick. It's being ordered online right now as we speak.
Thank you.
His dad was in the U.S. Navy.
It's quick and easy.
Thank you.
They make great gifts, too.
If you would like to build his credit card number.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks for coming to Enfield, and you know that the Town of Enfield supports you, and we'll be able to, we'll get out and do as much as we can to help your efforts as well.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
We do have another special guest with us this evening, and I would like to introduce Marie Latillier from the Four Town Fair. Welcome, Marie.
Good evening.
Good evening. Should Councilman Bosco join you out front as well and represent the Four Town Fair?
I would love to have Joe come out here. That's why he's shaved.
The new Joe Bosco.
Yeah, that's right. Marie, you show up and Joey shaves once a year.
Joe, would you like to pass those to him?
Sure.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for inviting us to participate in your town council meeting. My name is Marie Latillier. I am a director for Four Town Fair, and I am the committee chairperson for the 175th anniversary of the Four Town Fair, which is 2013. We are looking for participation of the Town of Enfield and its residents, businesses, youth groups, organizations, or any other organizations I didn't mention to participate in our event this year. We're planning a major, we have planned a major laser show for this event, and we're looking for sponsors for either our laser show or any other type of sponsorship that they would like to get involved in. Our event is annual. This is our 175th anniversary. But every year, we meet as an organization to promote agriculture in the state of Connecticut. We are Connecticut's oldest fair organization, oldest continuing-running fair organization. And the four towns that participate are Enfield, East Windsor, Ellington, and Summers. We're here to get more people involved from each town. We have approached each town, and we have had a tremendous response from the towns. But unfortunately, I was here on December 3rd, and we haven't heard anything from any of the locals here in Enfield. I have contacted your Fourth of July Committee, and they haven't gotten back to me yet, but I'm sure that they will in time. It was just a short period of time ago that I contacted them. So we just wanted to come to you guys and see what you have to say, or what you could offer for some sort of advice.
Questions?
Well, let me just, it's a little weird sitting on this side now after all these years. You know, one big problem that the Four Town Fair does have is the residents of Enfield sort of forget that it is, Enfield is part of the fair. Same thing with East Windsor and Ellington. Everyone thinks it's a Summers Fair. But a little history, it used to go from town to town, and that's where they got the four towns. So Enfield's always been a very vital part of this town, and a few years back, it just forgot us. And it is an Enfield event. Like I says, everyone keeps forgetting. One big thing that's happened to us at the fair that actually hurt us pretty good was they have Family Day. And Family Day is always on our weekend of the fair, and I've mentioned it before at the last meeting, you know, maybe they could look and see if they can move Family Day. We really can't move the fair. It wouldn't be right after 175 years to change a date. But, you know, Family Day really is detracting from the kids, who really the fair is more in tune to, to teach them the way, where your food came from, the agricultural part of what the fair is about. You know, it's not for the rides, it's to teach kids how and where your food comes from. And, you know, you have different shows and what they did in the old days, when they used to try to get rid of a cow, or some chickens and whatever, you know? And they used to go out, and they'd show, and they'd market them, and that's how you bought your food. So Family Day really is a big detriment to us, and it takes all them children that maybe would go to the fair, and of course, they're going to want to go to their school function. I mean, if there's something we can do to move Family Day, it would be the biggest help that we could get. Plus, also be nice for other types of help.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Mangini?
Thank you, Marie, for coming and presenting and giving us some information about the Four Town Fair. It's a wonderful experience. I brought my children, I'd like to bring my grandson. But, Joe, you do make a good point, there was a conflict. And I'm wondering, you know, if at some point, maybe we can revisit the conflict with the dates, because the children do, you know, enjoy the 4H, and they enjoy the parade, and they enjoy all the festivities, but they also have an allegiance to their schools, their towns. So maybe that's something that we can explore. But certainly, and I'd like to further investigate through your literature, the sponsorship. Are there different levels of sponsorship that you can do?
Yes, there is. If you go on our website, there is, you can either tweet us, or Facebook, or go on our website, and there is a sponsorship logo on there that you can get more information.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Further questions, comments from the council? I have one. My other hat is chairman of the Fourth of July Celebration, and I'm the one, the keeper of the post office box, and I haven't received a communication from the Four Town Fair. Was that directly to a committee member?
It was an email to a committee member. It was an email to two different committee members.
Okay. What I'll do is, Marie, I'll send...
You were not one of them. I'm sorry, Scott.
I want to follow up with those folks not getting it. No. But, Marie, what I'll do...
Greg Stokes was one of them. I just sent it a few days ago, and I've been gone for the weekend, so...
Okay. Well, we'll have to check. But we'll be in touch with you as well from a committee perspective to see what questions that you have and how we can lend a hand. Matt, I'm wondering if the council doesn't mind, if the manager could send a letter to the superintendent... to the superintendent requesting that, that the school system looks into moving Family Day on the green because of the conflict.
Do it the next week.
And then, of course, it's not our, it's not our decision, but we can say that we had a presentation by the Fort Town Fair, and that was one of the areas of concern that was raised because of the conflict. And the town of Enfield is a direct participant and should be in the Fort Town Fair. I know every year, I'm a judge for the parade, and I, it's a great parade, but I would always love to see more participation from Enfield. And we try, and we try to get folks out, but hopefully, we can make a full court press this year to have some of our organizations, our high school band, and some businesses to get out and support the parade and make it an even bigger and better parade. So we'll, we'll see what we can do. And our affiliation with the fair probably allows us to post information on our website to try to help with the promotion of sponsorship and just general awareness and participation at the fair. So we'll see what we can do as well.
I have another request. The other three towns have linked us into their website. Would it be possible that we could be linked into your website?
I think we can, yes. Since we're, our policy is that it has to be a town-related function, and since it's, Enfield is part of the Fort Town Fair, it shouldn't be an issue, so.
One, another thing, and I know has nothing to do with the council, but maybe I'll be direct Marie to send a letter to Chairman Neville. It'd be nice, the old days, and it really isn't that long ago, they used to get the schoolchildren out and let them come, you know, like Friday morning before the fair got going, so they could see the animals and touch them and, and see, you know, see what it is. And it would be nice if the town could do something like that, you know, even if the council side helped with the busing. And it just was, it was really nice to see the little kids, and they were, they were able to come down at their own time, not where they had to worry about all the people and, and everything going on. And that would be a nice gesture if we could do something and work with the Board of Ed to get the kids back there, you know, Friday morning or something, to come get a, a view of the fair and come on in.
Our committee members do send out packets to all the schools, and they do put a letter in there, and the admission for all the kids and anyone on that's on the trip is free. All we, we just want the children to come in and be exposed to it. So we're having everyone come in free for the morning of the children's hours of school. So I don't know how you guys do your little trips for kids, but I know they go to like apple farms and that, and it would be a great education for all of them. And in advance, we know in advance who's coming, and we prepare an area for the childrens to bring their brown bag and that. So it would be great to see the kids there. It really would.
Okay. Deputy Mary Nelson.
Since we can control the town grounds, can we, you know, have that weekend as a maintenance weekend for the town green? No, I'm being serious. I mean, we control the booking of it, and this is a town event.
Right.
I mean, I understand, because you see a lot of children there, and I think a lot of people have forgotten that the Fort Town Fair also has other things besides rides and food. You know, you have the animal and the learning part of it, which is, is huge for the children, and people seem to have forgotten that over the years, and we need to get that back.
That's the case. People forgot really the real reason for a fair. It's not the rides, it's not the food, it's to get back to nature and what things used to be like.
Yeah. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any, Greg?
Just wanted you to know, Marie, that the email did come today. I was already here when it came. So I just checked my personal emails where my Fourth of July is forwarded to, and I have it, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that's okay, and I will definitely communicate with you and take care and...
Beautiful.
We'll help you out. Definitely want to get...
Thank you very much.
Okay. I just, I was wondering why I didn't see it, but I was already here, and I didn't check my personal ones yet.
We, we did, we are going to get involved in, we would like to get involved in the Fourth of July parade that you guys have.
Perfect.
Have a float, just to show people you can bring, just bring a float. We're going to pay the permit fees for the town. They had asked once before about that. The Fourth, the Fourth of July Committee is paying, the 175th Anniversary Committee is paying for the permit fees for the people that want to come and participate and have a float in our parade.
I will take care, I will work with you, and I will take care of it. We'll get you all set.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Tom.
Uh, no. Okay.
Go ahead.
Tom, Tom. I think it's great, and I think that the field trip, I'll call it a field trip, is a great idea, because I've gone on the ones to the apple orchards, and I don't know if the, if the school system pays the apple orchards. I assume they do in some manner, but to have a free one, you might get a few veterinarians out of it, you know, some of the eight, nine-year-olds. So I would definitely absolutely support that, and I think we should, like Cindy said, move the date on the Family Day to accommodate that and see if the Board of Ed can do that. Thanks.
In the book that we supply to the schools, there's forms in there that the children can enter photos, they can enter little vegetables, they can enter flowers, pictures, they can make little Legos. There's a lot of things that the children can actually participate in, and it, it doesn't cost anything. Our premiums aren't high for these children, but that, that blue ribbon is worth millions to these kids.
Right.
So that's what we'd like to see. We'd like to see the kids get involved, even if it's a tree with a bunch of handprints on it with names from a kindergarten class. It would be great.
Okay. Thanks. Tom.
You still putting your billboards up in, in town, the four-by-eight plywood signs? Can we get one up on the, our town?
If you'll allow it.
Right? Because now we've established they are part of the town.
The signboard?
Yes, our signboard.
Well, we, we try, usually we try to book it. Something happened last year, and I don't know. There was some kind of...
There was another event going on.
Yeah, there was some kind of mistake on the dates, so we couldn't get it. So usually, I'll try to get ahold of...
We'll talk, talk to Deb McCarthy tomorrow morning and book your weeks. Anyone else?
It's called a billboard?
Yeah, right in the center of town.
And who's the host town this year?
It is East Windsor.
East Windsor is the host town.
We have the, we are blessed to have 175th. It's a big event, and we're using, we're going to have a big laser show, and we're trying to do something different and not counteract with fireworks with the animals. It doesn't work out well sometimes, so. Cows don't produce milk well when there's fireworks.
And, you know, just a side note, it would be nice if...
Is there an Enfield date?
A date for Enfield Day this year. We usually celebrate all the towns once in a year.
We do all four towns at one time. The parade is led by whichever town, whichever town is the host town, which it happens to be East Windsor this year, is the grand marshal for our parade. But we're encouraging all of the towns to have their own floats. I mean, if you want to do it as a council, you know, if you want to do a float, or if you just want to be in our parade, it would be great.
Right. Any further questions, comments? Very good.
Just one quick side note, if anyone would like to be a volunteer, we're always looking for volunteers, because without volunteers, things will die.
Or a member. There's no cost in becoming a member. We'd love to see people involved.
I know Joey has some horses that he rides. Some horses to ride? I know you've got a couple.
Yeah, I got a couple horses.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just tie a string around Joey's leg.
And they're best friends.
Thanks.
Thank you, Marie. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is public communications and petitions. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, I will call on you. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes, and please refrain from the use of personalities. Public communications. Jack.
Jack Sheridan, Seven Buchanan Road. I just wanted to let people know in this town about your community conversation meetings that you hold, and I'd like to thank both the town manager, town staff, and the council who come to those meetings. The last meeting was, I thought, a really good meeting. There were more people than average, and I'd like to encourage more people to come out. I know a lot of people, when I talk to people, they say, "Well, I don't know how you do it getting up in front of the people here like I do." And I said, "Well, you know, after you've been doing it for 25 years, it's easy." But, but a lot of people do, they're intimidated by it, and I think that that format that you have, Scott, is, is really conducive to people getting out there and speaking. And I think they're still a little bit timid about it, but I would like to encourage more people. I appreciate you having those meetings, and I think there's more people that could, could lend, you know, some, some other subjects to things that are concerning them. And I'm just here to thank you for having those and continuing to have them. I don't know how you guys find all the time to do these things that you do, but I want you to know that it is appreciated. And I hear other people talking about things that they see on ETV that you think are probably not recognized, but they are. And, you know, the people I talk to really appreciate what you do. So I thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Public communications. Anyone else? Thank you very much. We will move to councilman communications and petitions. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. I promised, I promised the children that I would wear the Dr. Seuss hat that they made for me, because Friday was Dr., we celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday, the Cat in the Hat, and I had the honor of reading to Enfield daycare kindergarten class. And actually, they have, they have been reaccredited NIAC. Okay, okay, okay.
No, 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 leave it on.
All right. I promised the children I would do this.
You're on the clock.
This is when Michael Dukakis lost the election, by the way, so Bill Lee just reminded me of that, so.
It will be on Facebook in about two seconds.
They, they were, were very excited about the book. It was about a footbook, but they were filled with questions, and they had all kinds of thoughts. But my point is, it was more, I think, exciting for me, because being with those children is just so refreshing, and I think if everyone could take a few minutes of their time to spend with children, it's wonderful. And I thank the daycare for seeking me out and just asking me to read the book, and I'm so happy about that. But when they gave me this hat and this bowtie, I was really excited, so I promised them that I would come and also congratulate them on their reaccreditation, their NIAC reaccreditation. You know, our staff is doing a wonderful job with the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
I have Carol next.
I love the hat. I can't, I can't top that, but I have some fundraiser information coming up, and I know some of us are going to the last disco of Doctor Disco, which is a fundraiser for As Nuntuck. It's, it's their annual murder mystery dinner, and it's March 22nd. And it's always a great event. It's, it's a great auction, and it's a lot of fun. We, we always really enjoy it. And tickets are available, and you can call Chris Casey for tickets for that evening. It includes dinner. It's, it's actually a really nice, nice evening out. But Chris, or email Chris, and her phone number is 860-698-6267. Or you can email her at cwsmkc@gmail.com. And it's $60 a person, but it is a fundraiser, and it goes towards the community college. They do a great job every year. I think Scott and I and Cindy are there pretty much every year, and it, it's, it's well-attended, and it always sells out. So you want to get your tickets quick for that. The women, the Women's Club of Enfield is having an art festival, which we all got a flyer for. It's March 22nd from 7:00 until 9:00 o'clock, and that is at Enfield High, and there are a bunch of dates here, because it's Friday and Saturday night, Friday night and Saturday, noon to 3:00. So March 23rd for the daytime, and Friday night, the 22nd. So that's at Enfield High in the cafeteria. So come out and support. Great, great organization. They do a lot of wonderful things for this town. The next fundraiser, which is, is a first, and it actually sounds like a lot of fun, it's, it's the Celebrity Dancing with the Stars, and it's to benefit our social service department in Enfield. So it's, it's formatted like Dancing with the Stars, but it has different people from different walks of the town participating in this. So some of the people, Representative Dave Kiner will be dancing, Bonnie Mizoli, she's one of our principals at the school, along with a number of other people that will be participating. Scott is emceeing the event, and, oh, and Cindy's judging. All right. Carol's dancing. I, yeah, I wasn't going to mention that. And Fred, Captain Fred Hall will be dancing too, which I have to get to the police department. Maybe Carl can put that out in a memo somewhere. That should be...
It's already out there.
Should be, should be fairly interesting. But the dates on that, just so people know when that's coming up, it is April 5th. It's 7:00. It's going to be held at Fermi. And again, you can get tickets for that event through our social service department by calling They are selling tickets for $12, and kids are $6, and that should be a really fun evening. Again, it, it benefits our social service department, so we're always looking for our departments to try to be creative with some ideas of coming up with money to fund their departments and social services stepped up again like they usually do, and this is, this is a different event. So I encourage everybody to come and, and see, see the performers and have a good laugh if nothing else. So, thank you.
I'm glad I'm the emcee.
I'm glad I'm the judge.
Councilman Kenzler.
You can dance and emcee, Scott. I just want to let you know that. Speaking of performing and laughing and having a good time, by the, the next council meeting, it will have already passed. Enfield Idol is a week from Friday. Really want to encourage as many parents, students to come out. Tickets are $10 a person. It's going to be held at Enfield High in the auditorium. They still have about 170 tickets left. If you went to it last year or heard about it last year, it was phenomenal. They really, really, really did a very good job. This year is going to be a spectacular show with a great sound system, a light show, and some great entertainment. We have, really, the benefit for Effie, Enfield Foundation for Educational Excellence uses these proceeds to do some initiatives in the schools to help the children and the teachers, whether it be through purchasing of computers and other funding streams into the schools to help them during the year. They're a nonprofit, and they do great work. So if, all you out there, you can, you can go to Enfield Idol on Facebook, and you can buy your tickets, or just show up at the door. But please help us out. It's a great cause, and again, it's March 15th, 7:00 p.m. at Enfield High School Auditorium. $10 a ticket. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Lee?
I've got a quick one.
Quick one.
Just congratulations and best of luck to the Fermi-Enfield hockey team. They'll be appearing in their first round of the state hockey tournament, I think it's Division II, tomorrow night, 7:00 p.m. at the Northford Ice Pavilion, which is somewhere down, about 20 miles outside of New Haven.
Branford, north of Branford.
In the Branford area. And actually, I believe they're playing Branford, so that must be their home ice. So we wish them the best of luck, and hopefully, we'll have news of forthcoming championship games by the time we get here in a couple of weeks. Oh, yeah, and congratulations to the Buzz Robotics Team. Had a great showing up in New Hampshire over the weekend, finished second place in that divisional series. So we'll have... divisional series, so we'll have more details about their next stop, which will be the Hartford Regional at our next meeting. We'll have that posted, and it'll be on ETV as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
First through the mayor to the town manager. Matt, do we post the public meetings, the quarterly meetings, on ETV? Just when, the dates and stuff like that for them? Can we check into that and possibly do that? Because, and, you know, even, you know, put the fact that all the department heads are at the meetings. Jack's 100% right. If you have an issue with your road, this is your opportunity to one-on-one have a conversation with anybody in this town. It's not formal, it's not on TV, you know, but it, it's a great opportunity, and the attendance is very small, and the town does go out of its way to get all its directors there, all under one roof, to have a one-on-one with the people. So, if we can promote that a little better, I think that might hopefully help the attendance a little bit. Then I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move D, E, F, G, and H to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Any discussion? Sensing none, show hands. All those in favor? Those opposed? All in favor? Anything else?
That'll do it. Thank you.
Anyone before I go? All right, I've got a couple. Jack, thanks, and Ken, thanks for mentioning the public informational meeting, which was a week ago, Monday, and it was actually very well-attended in comparison to previous ones. So, want to thank the public that did come out and exchanged their ideas, and it was a good dialogue back and forth, and that's the beauty of the event. It's a, it's a Q&amp;A session, but back and forth, allowing people to get questions answered or just their thoughts out there to your elected officials, and as Ken said, your, the town manager and your department directors. So, it was a very good one, and we'll let you know when the next one is. It's quarterly, and hopefully we'll have better attendance as well. Want to congratulate all the folks involved with Magic Carpet, the, the new commuter bus, not commuter bus, circulator bus here in Enfield. We had a kickoff ceremony last week, and we actually had folks that, that came out to the, to the kickoff specifically to ride and understand the route and the timing, and it was a nice ceremony and a very successful event. Congratulations to, to all the folks that were involved in bringing the service to town. The ridership continues to increase daily. Councilman Mangini mentioned reading for, it's, was America, Read Across America. Read Across America. On Friday, I was at Head Start. I did not have to wear a funny hat or a bow tie, but I did get to read to, to a class, and I read, and I hope I get the names right, but they're both Dr. Seuss, and it was the footbook was one, and the other one was, I think it was called Ten on Top. It's the one with the, the apples on, on top of the head. And then I was, I was served or participated in breakfast, and we had green eggs and ham. And they were hard-boiled eggs, and they were green, so the shell. But I had a class of three and four-year-olds, and it was interesting watching them peel their hard-boiled eggs, so I was put to work, but it was a fun, a fun visit to, to Head Start. Last week was very busy on the, a variety of meetings. Did attend a legislative breakfast hosted by CROG, Capital Region Council of Governments, down at the LOB, and we had, we had decent turnout from the legislature. We didn't, I think it was more of a CROG issue and getting a revised date out there due to the storm, to a snowstorm that canceled the previous one. Thanks to Representative Alexander for coming, and we had opportunities to discuss some of the issues that CROG has concerning the budget and commuter rail. We, I'm also co-chairing a committee. It's called the New Haven-Hartford-Springfield Rail and Fast Track Corridor Group, and it's, it's all the towns on the commuter rail line from New Haven north to Springfield, and any of the communities that are serviced by Fast Track, which is the, the new bus initiative for, for the state of Connecticut. We had our first meeting. Matt Koppeler came with me because to co-chair this group, town staff is assisting, but it was a very good meeting, and it was the introductory meeting for all the communities to show or to discuss their initiatives towards transit-oriented development that they're undertaking now around the rail and the commuter bus initiatives. And I do have to say that Enfield is one of the leading communities in what we've done to date, and to see the work that we've done in comparison to the other communities, and we're all in it together as, as municipalities, but Matt's report was, was thorough, and it was just good to see Enfield out in front. And the week ended with, I think was a very positive meeting with Commissioner James Reddiker, DOT Commissioner, here at Town Hall with our legislative delegation discussing commuter rail and when it will come to Enfield, and want to stress the word "will," and DOT will be working with the town to continue to highlight the areas that we are working on and still moving forward on. And of course, it's, there's funding issues, but I don't believe that they're obstacles and that we have a good plan in place to bring commuter rail to Enfield and the development of our transit center. Upcoming, we have, I received a Facebook posting. Cindy, you, you got a lot of likes and comments on, on your picture already, and as I was, as I was scrolling through, as I was scrolling through, and this is a topic of, of the day, it seems, but the Thompsonville Fire District, they will be holding a tour of the existing station on March 12th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. The meeting will be held at the Thompsonville Fire Station, 11 Pearl Street, and this will give, and this is from Chairman Bob Gillespie, "They'll also review the plans for the new firehouse and give anyone interested the chance to see the present condition of our station and the future for our district." So, that is March 12th, 2013, 7:00 p.m. at the Thompsonville Fire Station, 11 Pearl Street. That's a Tuesday, and want to wish everyone Happy St. Patrick's Day, which is coming up. Councilman Crowley usually is out in front wishing all the folks, and everyone's Irish on the 17th of March, Happy St. Patrick's Day. And then on a personal note, my brother Todd has a milestone tomorrow, March 5th. He turns 50 years old, so happy birthday to, to my brother Todd.
Happy birthday, Todd.
It's a milestone, you know, you gotta, you gotta acknowledge the 50s.
What, do you think he'll die after that?
Anyone else? Anyone else? Councilman Hall?
Through the mayor to the town manager. Matt, on the, I got an email on the solar, the proposed solar sites, the police station. Can you give us an update under manager's report? Is, is there any truth to the rumor that something fell through on those? Under your report, if you could just address that. I did get that question asked and didn't know how to answer it, so, thank you.
Anyone else? So, we'll move to the manager's report. Matt?
Good evening. I'll answer that question tomorrow. I'm having a meeting with our representative on that, so I'll be able to answer where we stand for that tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Yep. Other than that, unless there's other questions, I have nothing for tonight.
Any questions for the manager? Sensing none? Okay. Town Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, keeping in, consistent with the town manager. I'll have nothing formal for tonight, other than the items we've been discussing in the executive, so.
All right. Any questions for Kevin?
No one ever complains that you talk too short, you know?
No. And he's not even on a retainer. Lawyer joke. All right. Next would be the reports of special committees of the council. Councilman Mangini.
I will make this very brief. We did have a CCM meeting last week, and of course, the budget was discussed in detail. Apparently, the state is looking to, or is in the process of balancing the budget on the backs of municipalities, and that's really unacceptable. Many, many unfunded mandates, everyone is aware of this, but along those lines, the governor did extend an invitation to municipal individuals, and I had the opportunity to attend a reception at the governor's mansion last Tuesday, and he did deliver his address, you know, to us, indicating that he was going to do what he can, you know, to make the cuts less severe as possible. But I did have a conversation with our governor and explained, you know, really, that the municipalities, we serve the people. We don't have opportunities like the federal government where they don't have to have a balanced budget. We do. Every municipality is responsible to the residents of the town, so I thought it was a pretty productive little gathering. We had people from East Windsor. I went down with Summers and Lisa Pellegrini, and we had people from East Gramby and different parts of the state, so it turned out to be a very nice little reception. So, I just wanted to report on that. And then when I come back from DC, I'll have an NLC report as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Cindy. Tom?
Through, through the mayor to the town manager, do we have the ability to throw out any rough numbers yet from the report we received today, which was another supplemental regarding where we're going to be in terms of funding from the state? That something we can sort of throw out there, share, or?
Well, I know CCM is projecting the number at, I think, $1.5 million, but, you know, that's discounting something that may or may not happen, which is money that would be normally going into the general fund from the state pilot, is now being shifted over to ECS. And I read, was put out there, and they're saying that according to the OPM director, you know, they're saying that the money isn't, it can be used to supplant monies coming from the community in the first year. However, we looked at the law, unless they changed it here recently, which could be. That's not the case, and what was the implementer bill for that? So, again, I don't know if they're intending to change the implementer bill to reflect that the first year, the money can supplant, but what we saw a couple of weeks ago, it didn't allow supplanting in the first year. So, if you throw that in, it's really 2.5 million plus is what the number is, so, if, if the governor's budget were to be adopted.
Thank you.
Turn that off. Any other reports, Councilman Lee?
Just a quick one. The Development Services Subcommittee met last week, and we're continuing to review and, and understand properly the, the Blight Fines Ordinance that was proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They attended the meeting, representatives from the commission attended. I think we're all in sync now as to what their goals are, and I believe council will have a copy of that prior to the next meeting, and we can review it at that time. Scott, through, through you to Matt, could I get a, a date for a development, one-hour Development Services meeting the last week of March? And I'll, I'll speak to your office tomorrow about the agenda. Thank you. All set.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else? Special reports of committees. Sensing none? How about the Enfield High School Building Committee? Any updates?
No. Councilman Crowley and myself have been attending as many meetings as we can. He has attended the last two because I was out sick, so I really don't have a report. They are meeting. I believe they're meeting on Thursdays and Saturdays. They're going strong. No news is good news, so I'm sure Pat can give a better update arrival next meeting.
Okay. Great. All right. We will move to old business, and is there a motion to remove item six from the table?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. All those in favor, by a show of hands. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Item's been removed from the table. The nomination, Councilman Mangini?
I'd like to nominate Bob Lemay for Enfield revitalization.
Motion by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Arnoni.
Motion to close nominations.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler to close nominations. All those in favor? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Bob Lemay.
Mayor Copan.
Bob Lemay.
Councilman Kinsler.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilman Lee.
Bob Lemay.
Councilman Mangini.
Bob Lemay.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Robert Lemay.
Councilman Stokes.
Bob Lemay.
Councilman Arnoni.
Bob Lemay.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
We have nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
And may we have a motion to remove item 12 from the table?
So moved?
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor, by a show of hands. Those opposed? Item's been removed from the table. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Diane Tapp to the Enfield Beautification Committee.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler.
Motion to close nominations.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Diane Tapp.
Mayor Copan.
Diane Tapp.
Councilman Kinsler.
Diane Tapp.
Councilman Lee.
Diane Tapp.
Councilman Mangini.
Diane Tapp.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Diane Tapp.
Councilman Stokes.
Diane Tapp.
Councilman Arnoni.
Diane Tapp.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
There's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Are there any other appointments from the council? Any appointments from the town manager? And items C, D, and E remain on the table. Under new business, there is no consent agenda. Appointments, town council will roll to old business, and no appointments for the town manager, so we move to items for discussion. All five items have been moved to miscellaneous, so we will now move to miscellaneous. First item, discussion, resolution. Resolution setting a public hearing for the 2013-2014 budget. Whereas, whereas that the town council of the town of Enfield values the opinions and comments of its constituents, and whereas in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 4 of the Enfield Town Charter, any elector or taxpayer may have an opportunity to be heard regarding appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year and for the purpose of being heard on issues of vital community importance and concern, and whereas the town council shall conduct a public hearing at the Enfield High School Auditorium, 1264 Enfield Street, Wednesday, April 24th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. Be it resolved that the order of business of the 2013-2014 budget hearing be arranged as follows. One, presentation of the town manager's budget. Two, the chairman of the Board of Education highlights education budget. Three, comments from members of the public for the first time. Be it further resolved that each speaker be requested to register with the town clerk his name and address, and that no speaker be allowed to speak more than five minutes each successive time the speaker's name is called. Additionally, any speaker who is not registered with the town clerk will be allowed to speak only after those that have registered no longer wish to speak. By Councilman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stokes. Discussion? Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
There's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion, resolution. Resolution endorsing the fair housing policy statement. It is the policy of the town of Enfield to promote fair housing opportunities and to encourage racial and economic integration in all its programs and housing development activities. Programs funded, is that, that is the statement. Programs funded and administered by this town of Enfield must comply with the provisions of Section 46A-64C of the Connecticut General Stat- General Statutes, and with related state and federal laws and regulations that prohibit discriminatory housing practices. The Town of Enfield or any sub recipient of the Town of Enfield will carry out an affirmative marketing program to attract prospective buyers or tenants of all majority or minority groups without consideration of race, color, religion, sex.
The next, the next page is actually the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the official statement.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Can we make a motion to waive the reading?
There's a, there's a motion to waive the reading by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion. All those in favor, by a show of hands, of waiving the reading. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those opposed? One in opposition. So actually seven in favor. I'll vote because that's a long one. All right. Is there a motion, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion. Deputy Mayor Nelson.
I believe I'm going to vote against this, only because I have an issue with the fair housing laws, the way they're written right now. It's not fair that you have people with drug problems and alcohol problems living in elderly housing, creating quite a nuisance for our grandparents who are living in the same facilities. I understand they need help, but they need to find another place for these people. It's elderly housing for a reason. It's not just called housing. We do have housing. And I know the state is working on it. I know Senator Kissel's working on it and stuff like that. So I'm going to vote against this, and hopefully they hear it, and, you know, maybe a couple of you understand what I'm talking about and go with me, just to prove that, you know, th- this town wants our elderly housing to be that elderly housing. So I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Mangini.
I'm going to vote in favor of this resolution because we have laws in our state to benefit the whole. And I understand, Deputy Mayor Nelson, where you're coming from. But rather than exclude, I think it's more important to include and be supportive of those individuals that rightfully have need for this type of housing. So I certainly will be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilman Kinsler.
I am, I'm more concerned about the safety, going along with what Councilman Nelson said. We have numerous incidents in the, in the recent past where the safety of our elderly have been put at risk. And it's, it's a big problem. I don't honestly know the answer, but I know that the answer isn't what is set up right now. So I will be voting against it.
Councilman Lee?
I'm going to ask a question. Scott, through you to Matt and perhaps Mr. Bryanton. Could, could you explain what, why the town is making this statement if things like the Housing Authority are independent from us?
Well, this, this is required for us to submit for funding through CDBG. And so they require that we adopt this on a, I don't know, it's every few years we have to update it?
Every time we apply.
Every time we apply.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So not to adopt it means we won't be able to apply for CDBG funding, which is the next item on the agenda.
All right. So it's, this doesn't directly deal with the issues we're having with the Housing Authority properties. This is more of the housing rehab funding that we're seeking right now through CDBG?
Well, this, this is for a different project. We've, we've already submitted for that and received funding for the housing rehab. This will be for the next, next round.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Arnoni.
Yeah, this is a big point here. Although that is a small problem with a housing problem, this is a broad statement of the Town of Enfield not being discriminatory in any way with any housing, whether it be a rehab house or whatever. So that's, you know, I'm definitely going to support this. But I do understand the problems in some areas. But I think the general language here is, in a broad sense, for the whole town, of what our attitude towards housing is. Thank you.
Any further comment? Councilman Bosco.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain. I really don't know enough about it. So I'm taking the safe road.
Any further comment? Although I, I, I understand and appreciate Deputy Mayor Nelson and Councilman Kinsler's comments, I, I want, I'll vote for this because I think, I believe it needs to pass so that we can continue to apply for and receive the CDBG funding. And, but you're, you're dead on, on, on the issues in, in the Enfield Housing Authority and, and the, what was started here in Enfield as senior housing is being overrun by other folks that state and federal officials require the Housing Authority to, to give housing to. And you just, you, you hear about the nightmares, you, you listen to the police scanner, and you hear about all the incidents that are there, and they're not caused by who we originally set up housing for. And when I say we, it was our forefathers years ago in working with the Housing Authority. But we have to deal with them now. And, and thanks to our legislators for putting in legislation to put some controls around the numbers of non-elderly that are allowed into public housing here in Enfield, which we classify and which our residents in town, whether they live there or not, feel that it's elderly housing. But it's, every year, it's becoming less and less of a place for elderly, and more and more for, for other folks that need housing. But they're being housed in places that were not intended for non-elderly housing. So just because it's CDBG funding, I'll vote for it. And we'll continue to work with our legislators to drive that point home, that there's just something going wrong in, in, in that housing equation now. Councilman Kinsler.
And I think we're all sort of on the same page on this. It's really close. But, you know, I, I just want to send the message, because when I dug into this, when I first got elected, I was shocked to find out that, you know, the Housing Authority can't even set aside an area. So if you have eight units available in the month of April, you can't say, well, four of them are going to go over here because they're, you know, 18 to 65-year-old people that are considered disabled, and the 65 and above elderly housing will put the other four over here. They have to be first come, first served. And it creates a problem where their hands are tied. They, you don't know who's going to be next door to grandma. And if you're a disabled person, you don't know that you're not going to have grandma right next to you. So that's the piece they got to go fix. And I know we can't fix it here, but I just wanted to make the statement. But I understand, we need to see, we need the money, and, thanks.
Any further comment? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
I just want to be clear. This does not have any reflection on the Enfield Housing Authority. I think they do a great job. They're bound by the state, even CDBG, community development. These guys are, they're on their game. They know what they're doing, but they're bound by these laws. And unfortunately, this money comes with those strings. And I know we're all working on it together, but this is just me kind of making a stance, you know, and I know it's going to pass. If it wasn't, then I probably would vote for it. But, I mean, we're all in it together. But I don't want them to think this is against them because it's not by any means. It's for them, to help them get back on track where they want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Against.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Against.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Abstain.
We have six in favor, two against, and one abstention.
Okay, next item is discussion, resolution. Resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into agreement with the State of Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant. Let me see if I can find the resolution.
Here.
I got it. Resolve that the town manager, Matthew W. Coppler, is empowered to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the State of Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, and to affix the corporate seal.
So moved?
Moved by Councilman Hall, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Discussion. Peter, do you have a presentation or open for questions?
Open for questions. I'll just briefly, I did not prepare a statement, but I'll tell you that, that the intent of the half a million dollars is to, is for road construction in the Thompsonville area. As you know, all know that we have the Roads 2000 program. And what this will do, this will supplement that program. We have some areas down by the river that, that are in need of not only roadwork, sewer work, and new sidewalks. So that's what this, this will cover. Because it's CDBG money, it can only be used in a low-mod area, which Thompsonville is. And again, we want to supplement what we, you know, the, the money that we have. And this will go towards helping our, our road program.
Very good. Questions? Councilman Kinsler.
Just to clarify, too, that the monies that come in on this, that get pigeonholed into that area, we don't have any intention of taking monies out of that area because these are coming in. These would be in addition, truly in addition, in Thompsonville?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Councilman Hall?
I just want to say, creative way to, you know, all the work that's needed to be done down there, and the money for Roads 2010 is running short. So I applaud you for your effort here. It was a great, great way to supplement those, those requirements and needs that they have down there. So I'll support this. Great, great effort.
Thank you. I should also mention that we're combining our efforts with, with the Public Works Department, and they've been very gracious in trying to accommodate this because, as probably some of you know, the, it takes a little while to get these grants. The last one took six months. And so we were able to pull a piece out of the Roads 2000 plan specifically for this grant. And, you know, it's been a good team effort to, to pull this off.
Good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Carol, Councilman Arnoni?
Yeah, great job. These grants are, you know, very competitive. I know it must take a long time for you all to get these grants together, and it's a great thing. And every block grant, the grant that we can get and use it downtown, it's a great thing. So thank you for your hard work, and your staff, too. Could you pass it on, please?
Thanks. Just to clarify, we haven't got it yet.
But yeah.
But we're gonna.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
There's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mayor. Next item, discussion, resolution. Resolution adopting the Town of Enfield Emergency Contingency Plan for Elections. Whereas pursuant to Public Act 2011-46, now known as Connecticut General Statute 9-174A, the Connecticut Secretary of the State in September 2012 adopted regulations that include an emergency contingency model plan. And whereas, the town's registrars of voters and the town clerk recommended the adoption of the emergency contingency model plan as the town's plan. And whereas, Connecticut General Statute, Section 9-174A, requires that the plan be submitted to the legislative body of the municipality for approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt and approve the attached Town of Enfield's Emergency Contingency Plan for Elections.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
There's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item is discussion, resolution. Resolution amending Section 30-2 Voting Districts. Whereas in November 2012, qualified electors of the Town of Enfield approved the altered boundaries of the Town Council districts. And whereas, the alteration of the district boundaries necessitates the repeal and replacement of Section 30-2 Voting Districts of the Town of Enfield Code. And whereas, a public hearing was held on March 4, 2013, at 6:50 PM, in order for Enfield residents to comment on the proposed repeal and replacement of Section 30-2. Now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby repeal Section 30-2 of the Town of Enfield Code and replace it with the attached Section 30-2.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Kinsler, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Discussion. Councilman Kinsler.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. I've, since we started this process, I've heard some concerns about moving the districts and balancing them. And I just wanted to assure everybody a couple of things. One, we do this every, from what I understand, every 10 years, go back, because populations move, companies come and go, apartment complexes fill up empty, that type of thing, housing gets built. And in, in rebalancing them so that they're, all four districts have as equal representation as possible by a member of the council. In my particular district, last election cycle, we were down about 2,000, 1,800 residents compared to the next council district. With this balance, that puts balance back into that one, as well as one other district, so that all the districts are within about 150, 200 residents. In another 10 years, we'll probably have to do the same thing again. So I just wanted to just clarify that that was the purpose of this, so that the public had equal representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any further comment, discussion? And council, just what was handed out is the, is, is the section?
Yeah.
The one that's at your desk.
And, and the difference between what was put in the packet and what's at the desk is based upon discussion with the registrars. They have the, the ability to change the polling places. I guess that's within the state law. They have that right. And we had followed the, the former code that was in place. They had it listed as that. So what we're recommending is we take the polling place out of this ordinance and just go with the districts themselves. And then the, the registrars then would be able to lay out where those voting districts would actually go to the polling place. Right. Do you want to say that again?
So the district boundaries stay as proposed. It's just the designation of the actual polling place is left up to the registrars.
And, and at this point in time, they've not indicated they're going to change those.
Correct.
It's correct what, where they're at in here, but
Right.
To keep it consistent with state law, we have to remove that.
Right.
Sure. And if they do decide to change a polling place midstream or whatever, both registrars have to agree to that change? How is that set?
He left. Oh, he got out of here just in time.
If you could get back to me, I would assume that's the case, but I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, typically, whenever they've, you know, made or, or asked for that, they've come together.
Together, yeah, that's what I've seen. Okay.
And they come here for feedback.
Right.
Any further comment? Councilman Lee?
Through you to the town manager, are they projecting any difficulties with the construction at Enfield High School at some point during the building cycle?
It, it could at, at the point in time where they're working on that section over there, cause some issues. But, you know, we're probably talking 2015-ish when that will happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment? Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
There's nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
That completes miscellaneous. Next item on the agenda is public communications. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Sensing none. Are there any councilman communications? Councilman Lee?
Real quick one. This came up at the, at the community conversation last week. The Department of Social Services has great little fold-out maps of the Magic Carpet Bus Route, and they will provide these to any business or organization who wishes to display them and make them available to their patrons or members. And all you have to do is contact the Department of Social Services, and they'll send them right out to you. Or drop them off, even. So, thanks to them.
Thank you, Bill. Any other councilman communications? Councilman Arnoni?
Yeah, a quick thank you to Dress Barn. They've got a stack of those on their counter.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Councilman Stokes?
Just, just briefly, in case my granddaughter watches.
Just, just briefly, in case my granddaughter watches rerun, happy birthday to my granddaughter, Juliana, for being, becoming nine years old now. There you go.
Nine years old.
Right.
Any other councilman communications?
Happy birthday, Todd.
Happy birthday, Todd.
That's right.
Is there a? The older Copan?
Motion to adjourn?
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor? Those opposed? We are adjourned. Good evening.